Oh. What's up, everybody? This is the poker coaching study session. Today we're with Eric who took second place in the Bounty King Junior. On last Friday, November second. So what's up, Eric?
What's up?
Let's see how you did it. Start with pocket tens. You want a three bet or you want to call? I think both are fine, my right?
Yeah, both are fine. I don't know what I do.
One for that three bet, which makes sense. He just.
I'd love to see it bigger. I'd love to see like fourteen big blinds.
Okay, maybe a bigger, yeah, makes.
Yeah, like when we're, when we're a hundred effective, uh, from the big blind, we just can go huge and polarize the heck out of it.
Yeah, twelve makes sense or something like that, like you said.
Yep, yeah.
So here, um, check that small. So usually, how often are you gonna see that here? And like basically why do you check? Does he went three bet and then?
I usually bet, bet a lot. I don't know what I, I didn't nut this time.
Yeah.
Maybe I was slipping on the job, playing too much table.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I see better later. I wonder if it's the right thing to do. Let's put it in the machine. So machine says raise is good, but see you call a lot.
Yeah.
And then. The machine checks most of the time on this board. Interesting. Why is that?
That guy is, that guy is, is UTG. If the guy was, uh, was, uh, but then, but then I cut off, you'll see that. Maybe.
It's a thing we s- we see as well, the, the, the first pair under top pair just really doesn't.
Ah, that's, that's it. I think that's the thing here, right? It's always like that, right?
And, and you don't, and you don't really have to. There are no really flushes possible.
Yeah, you, you just don't accomplish anything. Like you can get overcards to fold, but like.
Yeah.
You get, you get like undercards to fold as well, and you kind of want to keep undercards in. You want to keep hands like nine, eight, hot.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not totally, uh, I like the, the way I play it.
Okay, so River, you need to bet big here.
Yeah.
So the machine says like eighty percent box.
And, and I didn't.
Hmm.
No, I'm sure, I'm sure I bet. Yeah, I bet small.
Tiny, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't think he calls a big print, though.
So, so it's fine.
Yeah, right. Is dude, oh. Mono, we should probably bet a little bit often here. Like it's a small blind, so the rules are different, right?
Yeah, bet two. Yep.
Okay, I like, I like betting in position on monotone boards. Here you go with a small call here.
Yeah, play a lot of. My, my ace, my ace queen, so turtle, we all really like to, uh, smoke call behind.
Yeah, and you're playing like, you want to keep like bounty access, right? Because.
Yeah.
Yeah, and like dominated plus draws, like you want them coming along with like king, jack, ten, nine, diamonds.
Okay, I like this phone. I think it's a good one. What do you guys think?
I think it's kind of nice. You kind of lost the minimum, uh, sometimes the opener's gonna have like jacks or whatever, and you were like, yeah, ace, queen and nines, like we. I, I was gonna say that I don't think it's a snap fold at equilibrium, but that forty big blind shove is probably quite strong in practice, um. But then, yeah, I don't know.
His range usually is gonna be stronger, right? But it's a BKJ on the, on the Friday, though.
That's the thing.
I'm not sure if you try gamble for the bounty here, but the guy's free bet in EP, EP, so it's gonna be a tight range.
And do you cover cutoff? Yeah, you kind of, the fact you cover cutoff, like I'm just okay with running it against jacks with a small, uh, you know, equity penalty like.
Yeah, you could possibly just flick the chips in, right? And play for all the cookies, just go all in.
Yeah. I, I do kind of think so. It's also kind of nice to just like make a huge stack, like for future game, it's great to make a huge stack early in a PKO, or just like chip down, re-enter.
But yeah, exactly. We can, we're early, so there's no value here.
Yeah, no hard as well if it's third hand, like.
And just reload if anything. So I, I'd really like to go for it here a little bit sometimes.
Yeah, I think it's close. But again, like, but sometimes the, the jammer just has like too strong of a range. Like if they have like queens plus, we're kind of cooked.
Yeah, I think I'd gamble there to be honest, but you know. It's bounty tournament, but.
Call from the small blind. We get this block, and now you lead here multi-way. I'm sure this is not good.
Yeah, it's not a thing. It's a big blind lead, not a small blind lead.
So what I think would be a lot better here, Eric, if, is if you check rates.
Yeah.
Of them is gonna bet, and you have a good hand to give action.
Yeah, I don't like my lead there, but let's see, is, I don't think it's totally terrible. Now I know, I know where I ha- where I'm in then.
Okay, where are you?
Yeah, fuck. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, it's not great, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not optimal, right?
Yes, not so optimal.
So bet.
Uh, I don't like this.
You know, this is not good. Call, call, okay.
We get called in two spots.
Now what?
Well.
Right?
I, how can you call this? The big blind just has a lot of pairs here. Any ace has a straight.
Just a six?
Yeah, any ace, any six.
I mean, this is a please cool me bet.
Like, maybe a set can even value bet that, but like we, we lose to all these hands.
Okay.
How often, how often do you three bet? Yep.
This I, I don't ever, but I know now that, that at this next size, I have to treat it a little bit more.
It's like fifty percent, right?
Yeah, but I, I wa- I was not doing it.
I think it's mostly flat, but I think it's like, maybe like free bet, like one fourth of the time.
One fourth? I was thinking it was fifty. Okay, you're right, it's, it's quarter.
Yeah, because it's gonna mix all suited connectors, because you're, while you're on the cutoff, it's gonna be very polarized. Uh, but yeah, deep stacked, oh, yeah, the button.
So and that, that percentage is gonna go up a little bit as you get to like one fifty, two hundred big lines, right?
Uh, I'm not sure if it changes. I mean, it, you, you have more like nut potential, so it's like the SPR is higher. This, you prefer high SPR with this hand.
I think you do do it more at two hundred, because I have like in two hundred cash game charts, you do it a lot.
Oh, bad turn, but.
Yeah, it's a pretty dicey turn. It's.
Maybe check behind.
What are we trying to get called by? It's kind of ambitious to get him to call us with like ace, eight or something, like.
Yeah, I guess just bluff catch.
Jesus Christ, another fuck. What the fuck?
Yeah. Hmm.
It's like a bluff catching theory. I don't know if you want to bluff against this, this guy.
I guess we just call, right?
It's a ridiculous spot.
Yeah, I fall.
I like it.
I don't hate it. These spots are under bluff.
I don't like my fall there, but it's so connected. It's not.
I don't know. Tell you what, I have a very, very poor river call efficiency, and I really want to call here.
Yeah. But he bet big, if he, he was betting five, I think I called, but nine, he has it too much often.
I mean, we only beat, we, it's a bluff catch, a pure bluff catch. We don't beat any value, especially this size.
So I like the full a lot.
I think it's good, yeah.
Check, bet.
Yep.
Raise. Check, hmm, check raise.
Uh, I just wanted to say this hand kind of makes an attractive three bet bluff, right?
Not really.
Hmm, we don't have AX much.
What, what do you want to three bet there?
Uh, to his raise, to his raise, I want to like shut him down with some like, shut him down with some bullshit.
But we only have, well, like, we have like ace eight, maybe king eight suited, eight, seven, nine, eight.
Thousand eight.
And the price.
Oh, no, I mean, no, I, I understand that he's allowed to have hands, but like if we also want to have a raising range with value, then we need buffs to go in it.
Tim, do you raise tens, jacks and queens here?
Uh, I think the way it's gonna go is you don't raise tens and jacks a lot, because you have bluffs in that region, but you raise like queens and kings some.
Though we block the bluffs though with our hand.
Uh, we are the bluffs. I don't know, I just like, uh.
Nah.
Uh, uh, uh.
Yeah, it does.
A sliver.
I'm a towel to the seven, twenty-seven percent is not a sliver, that's.
Click it, it's a click, click it back.
Yeah, they're raising back here.
I just were deep enough that like, I think, you know, we don't really want him to just like get to draw to like open enders and gut shots and shit when we have like, when we have pocket queens, you know?
This guy doesn't check raise often enough, right?
Well, I mean, yeah, you can definitely make some exploitive assumptions, but we can start with the theory. It's an interesting spot.
Isn't he, is a small check raise? I think he's supposed to check raise bigger.
Look at this thing here.
Yeah, he's suppo- he's supposed to check raise bigger than, than that.
He's supposed to don't lead a ton.
Yeah.
Uh, why?
Because we have like no AX, look at under the gun raise.
We have no eight X, no nine X.
I mean, what, we have, is it suited, king eight suited?
We have like.
Nine eight suited.
Nine eight, eight seven.
Yeah.
It's probably mixing.
Ace eight, king eight, right? That's it.
So four combos of eights.
No.
Fairly, you don't see that very often, right?
Yeah, that's interesting. Pocket eights, we have one combo.
Hmm. One combo of nine eight suited, so.
Exactly.
Oh, ten eight, well, that's quite loose.
And ten eight's always in there.
Yeah, I, I probably don't raise that.
I might, I might. See, he does raise quite small. I noticed that. So yeah, we're raising back with some. Yeah, some pairs and some eights, a little bit of ace nine. Yeah, believable.
A little bit of everything, actually.
Uh, I mean, kind of, but like, not like ace, king, not aces.
Deuces, no. I see a little.
It was just, it kind of felt like a raise. It's got a, you know, it's the lowest over cards. It's a gutter and not an open under, which makes it a nicer bluff, because it's lower equity, um, factor flush draw. Yeah.
I think best to be cautious, though, if you don't know. I mean, if the guy's a super reg, yeah, sure.
Right. Yep. But just, this is like, struck me as a, as a candidate.
Check. So we can raise back plenty here. Okay. Check. When I go, is check, do you bet?
No, no, I bluff for sure. If I don't, I.
I like this.
Yeah, yeah, I think this is a good card to bluff. You're gonna turn the king a lot.
Yeah.
And he should have like a fair amount of like nine acts and weaker crap, so.
The question is, do I continue to bluff?
Hmm. I mean, I think if we have spades, we bluff, but I'm not sure about diamonds. Oh, we bluff everything.
Likes to bet the turn, right? A lot.
Yeah.
We went.
Because it's like, it's a low equity hand, but that has like some nut potential. It's kind of a nice candidate for a blow, you know?
Um, I'm probably betting river, because we, I don't know.
You know.
Maybe we check back.
It's just like, what?
Queen, jack for sure, um.
But like, what flushes do you have here? Like, like he, he check raises some like, you know, ten, seven of clubs or ten, six of club bullshit, and then he slows down on the king of clubs and check calls it, like, I don't believe that for a second.
His size.
So, I mean, when you're betting, you're trying to get a nine to fold.
If you bluff, you bluff big.
Yeah, or even like ace highs that, that somehow felt like they had to continue, like ace, ace with one club.
No. Ace side doesn't make sense to me. I think he has a lot of straight draws that we're already beating, so I'm checking.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fair. Also, maybe a little bit of under pairs, like raising pocket fives here is not crazy, right? And issues.
I don't think diamonds are good. I think diamonds or hearts are very bad here.
Yeah, spades would be the best.
Are you alive, LP? Yeah.
I am. I'm thinking, do you go for it or not? You know?
I hope I did.
You hope you did, I don't think.
I hope I.
I'm still wondering if it's good, because ASI didn't raise you, so this bet isn't getting ASI to fold, okay? That's out of the equation. What are you trying to get to fold here? A nine? And nine is gonna stick it in against.
Yeah, you have a lot of, uh, you have a lot of bucket pair, that's.
A bucket pair? What bucket pair check raise this slot?
A lot. I, I don't mean, uh, I don't mean it's, it's a GTO thing, but.
Okay, maybe.
People, PP people do.
Maybe. Yeah, yeah, I can, I can see raising under pairs. I don't think that's.
Yeah.
Target seven, pocket six is sure.
Yeah, we're, we're still in something that is made, right? We're trying to get equi- made equity to fold, so I don't think it's great. I think I give up. Let's see what you did. You give up. Okay, let's see what the machine says. The machine says clubs go away.
And the other ones are located. So it likes, it looks like it likes Jack ten, because it's a little bit less showdown, but it likes queen jack as well, so, I don't know.
Uh, wait, what's the bluff? Was Jack ten?
Yeah, Jack ten's in there.
Is it just the, the flush, though?
No.
Yeah, Jack ten, you get better straight draws to fold.
Spades, yeah, but it's just spades.
Because you like, he can have hands like queen, jack, queen ten, yeah.
Yeah, Jack ten is, Jack ten and spades, wha- what else? Is that seven, six?
Some undercard, kind of, yeah. Okay, this is like almost too good, but it's mixing, so it's like in the neighborhood of reasonable. Okay, well.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I like the way you played it.
Yeah, I spare some ship.
I like, I like the play.
Three bet?
Whoa.
A little bit. Because you're not the, the, very deep anymore, you're not a hundred, and then you're in position.
Yeah, make it like six.
Six point five, like just over three, the stack depth is nice, seven.
Oh, my goodness.
Easy game. You were ahead, whatever. It doesn't matter if you make your.
Yeah.
You were, you were ahead.
You're gonna see a lot of that.
Uh, we, let's hope we do.
Uh.
Raise to like.
Ten?
Eleven, yeah.
Or bigger, maybe even, yeah.
Yeah, I like this.
What? I don't like this.
Now what?
Well, but what hands do small blinds have, whatever?
Yeah, I bet. You could have like ace jack, ace check suit.
That's small. It's a little bit big.
Yeah, it's big, but you know, it's okay.
Yeah, I bet to, I, I, overall, I bet too big in the three way, but. Uh, I may, I mean, three bet, but I mean, in a.
Yeah, I should go quarter there with those pocket nines. I think quarter would be fine.
Oh, yeah.
Old.
Yeah, sure.
Jack one.
Uh, I don't need to bet this pot without a diamond in hand.
Why are we betting?
To win the hand.
Yeah.
We block it. We have some good blockers. Eight, we block king, jack, we block, uh, ace, jack.
Yeah.
No, I would bet smaller than that.
Ace, jack should be through anything as a some frequency.
Um, that thing is correct.
We don't have a diamond. We don't block any, continue.
If it's correct. You want to be as small as possible.
We don't get better hands to fold.
I, I was gonna say the same thing, and we're getting lots of hands we dominate out of the pot. Like, I would love Button to have ace, seven of clubs, then let's see an, an ace on the turn. Why, why are we trying to get a seven of clubs to fold?
We can get undercards to fold, but like, that's it. Like under pairs, I mean.
Not really. I'm like, you think I'm calling with pocket sevens on the button to fold on Jack, Jack six? Like, who do you think I am?
I mean, if I'm the guy in a hijack and there's two people behind me, I'll fold my deuces.
Yeah, okay, man.
Come on, Lewis. We know you never fold.
Uh, this is probably a range check board.
You do?
Yeah.
Uh, when it's low card, you check a lot.
Yeah, and the SPR is so low that it's like, it's gonna be easy to get the money in.
Yeah, I probably check cool, because we got the extra equity of the heart.
We have the ace of hearts. Like, I think this is a, just a range check in general, but especially with this hand.
Yeah, even if it's not a range check, I'm sure this combo should check like almost pure, right? I mean, I'm not sure. I, I would get ventured to guess.
Like kings and queens a little bit more, because it's just a little bit more vulnerable.
Yeah, yeah, I definitely bet jacks there.
Makes a good check.
I mean, his range is so condensed, and we're gonna have so much air on this board.
Yeah.
Yep.
And, uh, smallish when you go, you went half pot, and you only need to go like third pot.
The wizard said it. Need to check.
Because like, we're trying to get him to float some like ace highs and even king highs there. We would love to get those calls, and they're not calling that sizing.
Check raise. I don't win.
Pure jam.
I would always check raise it. My, is this too dry? And then you check call, because you have the heart?
Yeah, and also the guy has got tough, so I think it's.
Protect your call range with this.
Yeah, yeah.
You're not afraid of any turn.
What does the machine?
It's not, it's not like he has jacks and queens that much anyway, right?
It's gonna be like a very high check.
Tell you, like, if he has jacks, people play their hands pretty face up. He's gonna try and put the money in. You will, um, close your eyes and call, like, right?
Eighty, yeah. Tens and nines.
Right.
And eights and sevens.
Yep.
It's just the stuff that is more gonna get drawn out on with random overs.
And then give him, yeah, B thirty-three, and yeah, exactly. So against the, against his bet, like our kings and queens raises back some, but aces really doesn't. It's just like, you don't have to fast play all your value.
Yeah.
A little bit of value.
Call with the heart.
You can raise if you don't have the heart.
Nick correctly critiqued my play in a three-way spot where I need to raise even with the flush suit. Um, because then there's just like more, you know, moving pieces to.
Yeah, I jam here.
I'm all in here.
Yeah, easy jam.
If I had, if I had jacks, I'd free bet smoother.
Maybe, yeah.
Not twenty, you're just all in.
Jacks, I think it's okay.
I got my first buntie.
Nice.
Nice.
Yeah, I don't need to call a fifth pair there. Let that one go.
I squeeze here.
I'm jamming.
Yeah, you can jam, you can squeeze. I can see both ways.
No, I think, I think, I think I'll make it ten. I don't think I'll jam, but.
I think it's forty, it's good against a raised call. You wouldn't do it against a single raise, but that calling range is just so. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it's quite good enough to jam.
Or, or.
It's probably jamming some frequen-.
Yeah, ten or jam, it's.
Or call. There you go, baby.
Can you look at this spot?
So is jamming like if we know?
It's gotta be.
King. And like, king, jack. You're too deep to jam this garbage, man.
Against two players, though.
Quite strong enough.
Two players, you can.
Yes, you do.
We should also check the stack depth, because I think it ran it at fifty, and if it ran at fifty, let's check it at forty. We're closer to forty.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that, that changes it a lot.
Does it creep in at forty? First, these positions, I still think.
Hijack button.
No, I'm gonna say no.
I'm pretty sure it does.
I think forty is where you would, where you would start to see it.
Yeah.
Oh, pure jam, okay.
Yep.
So jam or free bet, you can do anything, really.
So the fact that it's in there at forty tells me that even at fifty, it can't be a huge mistake, and at forty-four, it's like probably fine.
Okay, I'm.
It's cuspy. It's cuspy.
Eleven, that's fine. I like it.
Wait, Louis, can we go back to the range? So, yeah, and the thing with this hand is like, you want that, that three bet not all in to be hyper polar. You want very easy decisions when he jams on you.
Yeah.
You're not, you're not sad folding ace five oh, right? Like, you know your code.
Yeah, I've seen that. I don't have any, uh, forty big blind, uh.
Yeah.
Bush, really?
What I'm saying is like, is if, if you raise fold ace jack oh to tens, that's really bad, right?
Take a look, take a look at that, on that, if, when we do raise, let, let's get jammed on. I just want to see what, you said you want it to be easy to fold. I want to see.
Oh, it's gonna be.
Oh, it's, it's, you can tell it's polar, it's the top stuff.
Yeah, I just wanted to see whether, whether the eights were in there or not.
Ace, jack suited, it's gonna fold, yeah. Oh, no, cool.
Okay, the pa- all the pairs call, though. That's what I was looking at. Eights and sevens.
Uh, uh, oh, I thought we were bluffing eights, but it seems like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're just inducing, because it performs better as an induced than as a jam.
Without ICM, you should have a jam range at forty big blinds with two or more callers, and the more callers, the more jams you'll have.
Yeah.
Oh, he goes two multi-way. We don't close the action.
And he's dunking from the, dunking from the big blind, I just call.
I'm probably folding. We're drawing to the dummy end.
Okay.
Yeah, fair enough. I just think it's a good enough price, and I think he just has like.
Diamond.
Yeah, crappy stuff.
Yeah, but we, we, we never get into showdown.
I mean. I don't hate, it's like very low EV.
Can you pull a bear?
I like it.
You know what? These bucket deuce never lose. Can you pull a bear in a draw?
The thing is, even if we hit a deuce, you know, we lose to.
And we're not closing the action, Button could.
It's fine.
Yeah, I mean, it's all true. But yeah, Nick, like you said, it may be low EV. I think it's probably just good enough. And like, we're gonna, we're gonna know what's up from the, the way the action goes down on flop and turn. Like, they're gonna tell us most of the time where we're at.
Yeah, Louis, it's two things. It's ace, five suited and fives. It's fine. It's not, it's not there. The deuce is clean, from my perspective, clean enough.
So we got three players. We got twenty big blinds. The, one of them is the hijack, one of them is the button, one of them is the big blind. Hijack button, big blind. We have a connected board. It has a flush draw, right? Six, three, four. No. Here. Six, three, four, six, three, four.
There is five, four, three. Oh, no, that's five, four, four, no.
Five, four, deuce, no.
You can do seven, five, four, and play it like pocket threes.
Eight, six, four?
Uh, seven, five, four is better.
No, yeah, seven, five, four is better.
Best idea. It should be roughly similar to, given the positions and everything, right?
Except four, right?
Seven, five, four, you.
To the right.
Oh, seven, six, four is not bad either. Yeah, they're, they're both.
Oh, yeah, wait, no, seven, six, four is even better, isn't it?
Six, four, three.
Sure, yeah. Either one, they should be very similar.
Yeah, and we pretend we have threes.
Six, four, three.
Seven, six, four, so it's still a five that fills the hole, right?
Five, four, three?
No, it can't be open.
Seven, six, four, Louis, click it. Trust us, geez.
Someone take the controls.
Jesus, take the wheel.
Okay. We are what?
No, he bet.
He bets.
Big blind dogs.
Does he have a leading range?
That's the thing.
Yeah.
Does he? Oh, okay. Oh, is there an open jam here? Multi-way with seven, three?
Yeah, but we're not, we're not twenty deep.
Summer's psychotic.
Yeah. Twenty deep, huh? You're right, Louis. Thank you.
Well, how deep are we?
This is a twenty, twenty sim, and this is the.
Fifty. But we're forty deep with the big blind, which is gonna change us as well. Fifty deep.
Yeah.
But here he is, he leads, so can leave with some eights, some sevens.
Like, do we even have deuces in our range here?
Three.
Effective.
Threes, it's fine.
Oh, freeze. Like.
It's, we, we don't fold them.
So he leads, and then bam.
I mean, we could fold them.
Oh, wait, why'd you make a twenty effect? I mean, the one guy has twenty, but like.
Yeah, you need to make it forty effective. Or fifty.
Yeah, but DTL doesn't have that.
I don't know.
Well, let's start with this and look after if, if there's anything better.
We might get the actual board now.
Threes are in range.
Yeah.
Oh.
That's the thing.
Oh.
At forty, it might be, no?
Okay, can we go deeper?
No, it's all I got. Sorry.
Forty. Hijack button, big blind. Connected, other.
Was it eight, six, four? What's that?
Seven, five, four? No?
Seven, five, four is the best one here.
Eight, six, four? No? Seven, five, four?
Yeah, seven, five, four.
Does he leave? He leaves even more now, with no more all-ins.
Leads half his seven X, pair with straight draw, some two pair.
Sad success.
Bottom pair, yeah, pair and str- yes, just like pair and straight draw.
Flaws.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot more than pair and straight draw. You're raising offsuit eights.
Yeah, ace, ace of hearts with a pair or a draw.
So you can dunk leave flush draws a lot.
Or straight draws or pairs.
Yeah.
Or front door, back door, regardless, or.
Yeah, like, it's gonna be like ace nine with ace of hearts.
Single high card of the suit. How about that?
Yeah, nine of hearts not leading much.
King of hearts, you're like, yeah, I got that king of hearts, ha, ha, ha. What do you got? Multi-way action. Okay, so he leaves a lot and then what do we do with pocket trees?
Cool.
Just call.
But it's.
Yeah, we're continuing a hundred percent with them.
So, even though it's the dumb hand of the straight. And we don't.
Gotta lose more money.
You gotta call it cuz you have a pair.
It's also like if he flipped ace six, you know, face up on the flop.
I don't like this.
We would just call, we just have the odds. Yeah, I don't like this cuz I think he has a lot of sixes, so.
I mean, we're dead against, we're dead against fours and frees now.
Exactly, and the fact that.
Once button comes in on the flop.
Yeah. Yeah, when button, when, when he gets two callers, I'm hoping he slows down frequently. The fact that he doesn't slow down, I'm kinda concerned.
Two.
Like, what are you hoping for when you?
I mean, even if it went check and we check and the button bets, I'm gonna get out, right? Like, there's.
Yeah, yeah.
And at this point, five, like, makes a lot of boats. Like, if he ever has six, five, if he has pocket fives.
I don't like this.
Yeah, another spot that way, I don't have lead.
I think if you have a heart, it might do it some of the time, but like, it's gonna be a majority chat.
This one, this one.
It might do it more than you guys think.
This one, this one is not uh as bad as the.
Yeah.
Ace's one, but I think.
Wait, is this big blind versus cutoff?
No, under like gun, rifle like position.
EP verse.
Oh, okay, alright.
Yeah, yeah.
The thing is like.
You can bet quarter with a lot of stuff here.
Yeah.
You don't get value from much by betting here.
Oh, yeah.
Go smaller, though.
And there's nothing.
Fifteen percent takes this sizing. And then expand the flop.
It does bad, it looks like.
You just clean stuff up, though, Louis. You clean up like, yeah, see, the small bet is not bad at all.
Yeah, I, I agree. Um, like, you know, ace, eight, like even ace eight of diamonds, what's he doing with that if you call him? I don't know.
And it just performs, like, you can't, you can't play check call, really. So stab tiny kinda just performs best in terms of.
I mean, yeah, high bet board, cuz it's a high card board.
So, yeah, and cuz it's king high, like ace high is worse for us, but king high is quite good for us. And so.
Yeah, we have.
Especially like king jack. Like, king jack is nice.
Jacks, um. Ace, queen, full frequency. Um, I mean, ace, king, we have ace, king, they don't. We have king, queen, full frequency, they don't. Cuz they should free bet it sometimes.
Kings.
Yeah.
It's all kings.
Kings, jacks, yeah.
Yeah, we've been, we've been over this before.
Yep. It's just so good to review. It's quite complicated.
Flush draw and kings. It's all flush draw and king. Yeah, cuz he doesn't flat king, ace, king or pocket kings.
Yeah.
I always think about it when it's like button versus cutoff or button versus hijack and I never think about it when it's like button versus. I don't know.
Well, I think it's the further the positions I get, the more you get to bet, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's true cuz we have a better range advantage cuz our range becomes more concentrated around like ace, king.
Oh, I don't like this.
Yeah, I don't know about check.
You block the bluffs.
Yeah, that's crazy.
That's a big sizing. Like, he could have, he could go a third pot.
Or take it, and you go, very bad.
You blocked the bluffs, which, which is super bad.
We only have thirty bigs. I really wanna keep these chips. I don't think this is a very profitable place to invest them.
You'll have jack and small, you'll have flush draws, you'll have straight draws.
Exactly.
Remember if you had a read, any kind of read?
At this point now, uh, we don't see names, so I don't know if I, if I had a, we, we did this at that point.
Yeah, you should fold that turn. You should, yeah, fold turn. You bet flop, it doesn't work, just give up.
I like it.
Tiny if you don't think a ten.
Good jam.
We blind it down.
Yep.
And then we blind it real down like really.
It's fast, man.
Fast structures, that's fine.
You get it in good.
Exactly. Uh, do we jam a seven suited?
Yeah.
This might limp cool some.
Sure, right?
But like, it's a bounty, so you're gonna get cooled wider.
Yeah, I just, I think it, uh, I think the solver might let call this.
In a PKO format?
Ten big.
Maybe not.
We just. Yeah, uh, big PKO jam.
I like linking in a vanilla.
Right.
Okay, happy days. We got the ace.
We are back.
I like, I like the sizing.
Oh.
Uh, just call.
Do you call?
I'm, I don't wanna raise, we only pull, like, get called by better hands.
Can you never fold?
No, you can't fold.
What, is this a check call donkey's playing?
Yeah, I mean, this is a bad card to donk, but.
I think he has a lot of pop bears here.
Huh, he made it so small.
Yeah.
Miss check.
Fucking hell.
Okay.
Look at Louis over folding.
He was trying to buy the showdown.
Too small to fold one, but like, so often. Yeah, I don't know. He'll bet, if he bets river, you gotta fold.
He's like, oh, I don't wanna face a bigger bet with my third pair.
I might raise river with the uh straight draw blocker and the two pair blocker.
Sure, sure, sure. You just can't call, that's all.
Nice pot. And now we play for a bounty and, nope, this game is rigged.
I'd go win here.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, I think jamming's reasonable.
This one?
Yeah, yeah, twenty bigs. It's, it's like. It's like five, sixes, sevens, a couple suited jacks and suited tens, a little ace queen O.
Eight, eight, off, eight, eight, seven off.
This is a, it's a pure vanilla, but I think it makes a good jam in PKO formats.
They're pure raise, right?
Yeah, vanilla, yeah. I mean, you're jamming like ace eight off, ace nine off, um, ace seven off, low suited pairs and then suited real aces.
Actually, queen ten suited's in there a little.
Yeah, those ones go in like jack ten, queen ten.
Yeah.
King, queen's too strong, so you raise.
King, queen O does it a little.
Call.
I mean, it's because you're gonna raise call off and. I guess queen ten suited would rather jam than raise call off, right?
Chip up and give back, chip up and give back.
You sure gave me the good end of three?
Um, I'm probably folding. This is close.
Yep.
No, I've never folded. I shove this every time.
You're in early position in a PKO, um.
Yeah, you're gonna get cooled by worse, though.
Hold on, hold, go, go back.
That, that explains why I, I don't have a lot of uh. Buntier dens, but.
I, I'm here, I think it's okay. I think it's, it's the, probably the weakest in, the weakest ace. You don't jam as deuce.
Are we jamming in chip BB even?
Yeah.
Hmm. Yeah.
Put it, put it in the machine.
It's kinda nice that we get called wide in the PKO, right?
Yeah, if you have, also you have to consider FGS for this. We have only seven big blind, eight big blind.
Very bottom. In uh, in, in ten percent ICM, I don't know how deep we are, but in ten percent ICM PKO, twenty big blind average.
Alright, but it's fine. I like that we cover small blind. We can actually, we can make a bounty here. Right? Like, small blind is gonna call us a fair amount of time. Oh, I think that's, okay.
I think it's fine.
I mean, you can induce too, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, it feels like it could be a raise.
I think in PKO, it's fine.
There's a two big line, you wanna isolate the bounty.
Yeah, we have a guy with two big blinds, so I, I, I don't want to just, uh, just, just raise it and having the five people in the end.
Yeah.
Well, if you, if you min raise, he'll reopen the action if he doesn't complete. Like, if he jams for three, it reopens the action, right? So.
And the funniest thing is, this guy calls and this guy falls and the, I expect it happens and then, oh.
But you have, if uh the big blind jams and you re- reopens the action, we have no fold equity anyways, so I prefer just.
But, but we're gonna get it in for stuff that we crush.
Which means we want, like, maybe just to be a little bit more top of range there, like kings plus ace, queen suited plus for the induced.
Okay, fair.
Wasn't um dummy limp there? Wasn't that what uh Jeremy was talking about earlier?
Where?
Limper jam, I guess. Yeah, I guess you wouldn't min raise, right? You would.
I don't think it's good enough to limp.
I jam it.
I don't think you're, you're, you're super short anyway. You're not like, you don't cover one.
With, with the ace jack, you covered two players. You covered both the blinds, the big blind. No, we're talking about the ace jack still.
Here, I would like to jam.
Yeah, let's jam.
Yeah, jamming's good. Jamming's good.
With the ace three, if we limp the ace three suited, do we fold to a jam?
No, we were talking about the ace three when limping.
But the ace three did have some limbs in it, but it did.
That's in vanilla.
I think you don't call the ace.
And that's how chippy V too, right?
Yeah, chippy V, vanilla.
And do you call it off in chippy V and vanilla?
Versus who?
Who?
Probably not.
Yeah, I'd range check here.
Whoa, hey, what are you doing here? Check, check, bet four, pretty big into two players. Player one four.
I'm folding. You don't have a diamond.
Yeah.
You have overpairs here.
A little bit too sticky here, right?
The big blind has a lot of this.
You think, you think, yeah.
Definitely, definitely. Yeah, easy fold.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hey.
I just wanted to one card.
Yeah, it's not a good reason.
Yeah.
Calling and praying to hit a pair, isn't it?
You go all in here.
You can jam, you can raise, you can check back, I think.
You can do whatever.
Yeah.
I like raising. Who is the big, though? Why are you raised to five?
I raised to five with uh, with uh weak aces and then four with everything else.
No, let's, let's just like standardize that.
Yeah, 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 I know, I know.
Just make it like three point three or three point five with, at this deck depth of everything. If you're really deep, maybe four is okay, but I don't really wanna go four here. Cuz we want, we wanna be able to get with like some slightly cheaper bluffs with like nine, three offsuit, right?
I'm all, I'm all in here.
No, just call. I don't think so.
I, I like, oh, wow.
I would just call here cuz you want, no one to torch thirty big blinds there into fifty?
I probably.
Don't you?
I think I want to, because uh, uh, only one guy is covering me, so.
I think you'd prefer to do this with like queen jack suited, like a hand which is like, if someone overcalls with like an ace high, you're not like dominated.
Yeah, you're actually like forty-five percent, you're quite low against, yeah.
So if you have like jack ten, queen jack, um, maybe king ten suited, I kinda prefer that, for her with those combos.
I think this is the first hand that I really don't like.
Is it the first one?
Maybe not, but this one just really starts to feel bad, risking or.
Yeah, no, I agree. Why would you jam instead of like?
Three bets small.
Yeah, three bets like six.
Five?
I just call.
Just cool, yeah.
No.
Button.
No, not in ICM, no, no.
No, you're wrong. I'm gonna keep bounty access.
Uh, I, I think I remembered, I, I was, I was, I was about to, to think what sizing, so if I raise, I have to raise to like. Min raise, if I, if I raise. If I, if I raise to uh like seven, I'm committed to my, I'm committed to call.
Right.
Actually, that's fine, too.
Yeah, if you're gonna, if you're gonna have a, a non-all-in sizing against cutoff, it would be to four, but it would be much more polar than this. It would be something like.
No, no, it's not even that, Tim. You never, you never three-bet fold here in a PK.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I agree. I agree.
The reason you're three betting is cuz when this big stack wakes up with something, you can fold, you're like, it's like.
Okay, okay, but calm down, everybody. You want to keep bounty access here. That's the.
There's arguments for flattening, but, but before we go to that, it's important to realize that it's okay to be committed versus shorty when we three bet. It's okay to make it seven and know that you're never folding. And the whole world knows you're never folding. It's okay.
Yeah, I thought, but I don't want to be committed to the big one.
Bounty access if you make it seven here.
No, no, but you're not committed to the, the big guy.
Spot.
You can fold to the big guy still, if you make it seven, for sure.
Yeah, so I, I agree. I think, I think calling is fine and I think three betting are fine. I think jamming is not.
Right.
Like.
We agree, that's a blender.
Uh, you guys want CSM?
Yeah.
A PKO sim?
Yeah, yeah.
And now let's see, yeah, should we flat or should we? I think flattening makes sense in PKO.
Alright, give me.
How deep are we, by the way?
We have thirty.
How deep in the tournament? How deep in the tournament?
Oh.
I set it at seventy-five percent of field remaining. I don't know what the.
It's probably reasonable.
Yeah, right.
Probably like fifty-ish.
Where I thought, I thought in the way.
Ah, so okay, so this is the best one I could really see. I don't know, this one's kinda reasonable. I looked at this fifteen, we have twenty. I know that's not the same, but we're just trying to get an idea. Um, with twenty-six behind us, that's okay. We could have seventeen and cutoff and we're thirty-three. We could have seventeen and cut off and we're thirty-three.
This is too deep, way too deep.
So let's try, let's try later on, like if I go to, cause if I go to.
There needs to be twelve big blinds here.
Well, I know, but just we're just working with what we got. This is, I think, the best one. It's not perfect, so. Fifteen, twenty, twenty-six, sixteen. But yeah, it's twenty. Let's see where we're thirty, cause like maybe we can jam on hijack instead and that'll also give us an idea. I just want the big stack behind, right? Oh, this one's pretty good. I know, but we're just trying to get an idea, so. Cut off is shortish, button, you know, medium, and we've got one stack that we cover behind and one stack that covers us behind, so. Yeah, we don't do a lot of jamming for thirty. The mention that we wanna go for something like queen jack is spot on. Pocket nines, ace king O, ace queen O, hands that are gonna be good pretty much, no matter what they're calling us with.
Yeah, I said king ten suited, which is wrong, but I did say queen jack.
The EVs run right together, whereas we are losing EV if we jam ace eight suited in this different situation, so. Yep, I think team call has it. Um three betting is not crazy. Jamming is not good.
Thank you.
Cool. Bounty access.
Yeah, right. I think if you took those sims and put a twelve big blind stack behind us, we would definitely find some calls.
I'm raising this combo very frequently.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, seven O, seven O.
Eyes three.
I'm probably calling, but I don't like it.
Sizings are kind of goofy.
Yeah, the sizing is weird.
Yep, it's a flush. Great, love it.
You're never supposed to bet one third in position.
Always calls, right? Like it's not, yes, right?
I don't think machine will say always. I mean, it's gonna be marginal, man.
I'm being machine. What do you mean? What do you defend with?
Better to have seven king without a heart.
Oh, machine is pulling some frequency here.
Okay, so put a diamond in our hand and it's just snap call.
Yeah, for sure.
Just like any single diamond.
I mean, make the bets smaller and.
Even like king seven of spades is a better call.
Yep, right.
Because we don't wanna block hearts?
Yeah.
And like in practice, he's probably not bluffing missed hearts that much, but still, it's like a good way to keep yourself kind of.
Especially not king.
Realistically, when he bets four, like is that ever a bluff? Like ever?
It can be thin value, like does he ever do?
Question, is he ever value betting worse on the flush double pair run out? Is he realistically ever about value betting worse?
People show up with weird hands. I don't know, this is like live more than online where players are a little bit more reasonable, but like you just see people like live sometimes like barreling like. Second, third pair for small sizings.
What's that? King seven of hearts folded?
Like I'm guilty, I'm, I would probably pay this in game, but it's like. I just look at it and I know, it's like, oh, I'm gonna call and lose every single time here.
I mean, yeah.
To call and lose most of the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, but like if you're getting pods and you're supposed to be good twenty percent of the time, but you're not, you should just.
I think I'm good like two percent of the time.
Then you're fucking spewing chips.
Okay, so.
I think this is definitely a hand where you can tag this guy. What was the turn action? He bet big? So he bets, I mean, I I would tag, I would put a bunch of notes on this player, like the whole line. The turn bet is kind of reasonable.
Yeah, it's good.
The river bets.
I'm I'm realizing I'm defending too many sevens here.
What is he supposed to do with a that?
Jack ten and nine.
No, there's, is he, Louis, what's what's his range on on river as played? Um is he betting this flush and so forth sizing?
He'll probably have thought, right?
That's what I would go for.
Only fifty-eight percent.
Yeah, yeah, in position, you never go below fifty-five.
Yeah, and what's he actually using in practice with this flush?
What's up Dylan?
What did he have?
Ten nine suited. Wow.
Check or bet.
We have the worst flush, like. Uh you can't even get value from from other flushes or anything.
Alright, you got ISO behind, that's good. Cool.
This one, this one, uh the guy is uh really uh strong reg like ninety-eight percent. So I know he doesn't have uh aces, queen, he doesn't, he doesn't have a premium end.
Yeah, it's pretty standard, I think.
And I'm I'm so I'm kicking out uh one of the best player at the at the table.
Oh, I like going even larger versus small blind here.
Yeah, it's an option. I wanna, I definitely wanna size up turn to set up river jams. Um I wanna like go geo, geo is gonna be like eighty or ninety percent here.
Yeah, I I don't think this is big enough on either street.
I may be wrong, but I think.
Plus the turn with no diamond especially.
I may be wrong, but I think we are really deep in the tournament now. Like in the fifty left, because I'm starting to remember ends.
Yeah, fair enough. That I want to, that I wanna play the like an all-in pot with, like I.
Like really wanna. If he wants to call you with like jack ten, you wanna charge the max, right?
This is why we size up. Can we look at this in the sim? Uh cause I'm like betting seventy-five percent to pot versus small blind on the flop and the same on the turn.
You go blast.
Yeah, you can just, you can just go go geo threes like seventy-five percent all through streets, right?
Yeah, I don't think it matters that you're deep in the tournament.
I I bet this amount because on the turn, because I want to have a good size for all in on the river.
But it's not a good size. It's like oh, just over pot. It was half pot on turn and overver overbet on river and that's just like a little dicey.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, this is a good um good turn to go huge because nothing completed. We're not really expecting that he ever picked up two pair here. So like king jack and king ten are just, you know, like.
Like seven, eight, eight, eight big blind.
Yeah, it's it's nice. Nine, fine. If we went small on flop, then we definitely need to go big on turn. That's uh that's.
Uh he's supposed to like, uh he's got a like dong jam as hand.
I'm all in on third and river.
Yeah, I think ICM, you don't go for it though.
Yeah, like nice check.
I I didn't, I'm surprised I didn't.
Louis, what is uh jack ten supposed to do on the river?
Yes?
Yeah.
Dog jam is pretty sick.
Yeah, I think that's what I'm doing. We don't have blocked diamonds. We get some kings to fold.
After blast blast, you're gonna jam?
We still have a bunch of queen X.
I was.
Yeah, Nick, you're right. We have a delightfully polarized range in in small blind.
I get fear of the queen.
Childhood sim.
So you need a queen? It's really these two combos, right?
Yep, and you don't want diamonds. Oh, you jack nine of diamonds, eh?
What is this strategy, man?
He said it's the only diamond we have.
All different donk sizes.
I would look at that jack nine of diamonds in um uh normalized. And and see if we never have it.
Yeah, you take your eleven combos and you split them into four sizings, easy.
He does that, he's just losing his old stuff.
Jack ten, see, like you really wanna charge that guy on the turn, right?
I agree. Yeah, just get a couple more big blinds out of him.
His equity and then we never lose the tournament.
I think limp's fine.
Why?
Well, it's probably mixing.
That uh that we dominate, which is nice.
Uh before I was raising uh too much, so my coach told me to limp way more than. And also he covered me, so he can't just. I don't want him to be able to get my bounty easy, so I just slipped.
Yeah, it's good. Yeah, you're both biggest stacks on the table as well. If you're deep, you don't wanna get in a big pot, really, do you?
And this guy is pissing me off. I I have this guy all the tournament along and left to me at my left. But at the final table, I def- at the final table, I chose on purpose to have position on him.
Is this not a bigger big bet?
Limped blindly buying pot because we just.
Cause it's a limp potter range, it's so wide. I don't think we have a polarized strategy at all. I don't think we have a big bet.
I think we're often gonna start small and then go big later on.
It's big, it's overbetting.
Oh my god, it's huge.
Never mind.
I wanted to say one more quick thing about that ace king hand, um which is uh like you mentioned that you would still have like hundred percent how you could get it in on river, but uh. Those like one pair type hands um generally are not gonna play well on rivers against like opponents. When when he makes a hand that's better than ours, he's gonna know he made one, like when he makes like a straight or a flush draw. Um and those, but those hands also will never give us action on river. So it really behooves us to to get the money in more along the way, like get more money in on the turn. Uh cause yeah, as we saw, we we got no more chips from jack ten on a brick river.
By the river, all the equity is completed. He'll correctly.
Exactly.
A lot of stuff, right?
Like naturally make like polarized ranges by river. Either they get there or they don't, so and he will know whether he got there or don't, didn't, but you will not know whether he got there or.
On the turn, I would bet pot again.
So even if you're in the final one percent of the field, you're betting these large sizings here, Louis?
Yes.
I'm not.
It's blind against blind, man.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, but I mean, with this. It is just extremely strong.
I hope I bet something like four.
Do you bet too small on the turn?
Yeah, I was gonna say, with just with ICM getting this late in this massive field, I think that our pot sizing is gonna wanna go smaller to around half pot to sixty percent like. I think our sizings get pushed down in general. We're just gonna start doing a bunch of small jabs as opposed to swinging for the fences.
I think this is the spot where you build this stack for the later, the the, you know.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a balance between those two, between those two things. Um it is true that the sizes come down. You will, you still have big bets, but yeah, like Nick said, big can be sixty or fifty percent. That's fine.
I mean, you, the bounty's gotta be big now, right? You kind of wanna cover. But like, you can either argue that, oh, I wanna save chips, so I can cover, or I want a big stack so I can cover, you know?
The way I think about it, I I agree with Nick. I just think you shade down one, one notch. Instead of pot, it's eighty. Instead of eighty, it's sixty. Instead of sixty, it's thirty.
Yeah, I think that's more or less right.
And so on the turn, I think normally you could overbet that turn, so I would just like go like close to pot instead of overbet.
We can also size down with these nines, right? We're three betting a seventeen big blind stack um under very high ICM. I'd go like four point five.
I'll make it five.
I don't like, I I know that, I I don't, eh, I know that, but I don't like to do that yet.
You should uh, you should experiment with it. It works.
Mess around with it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just go five instead of six when when the guys got like under twenty.
You get a just, you get a work in just like some absurd low equity bluffs, which is delightful. Like you just like stab at him with king jack O and he folds.
Only in these high ICM environments though, not just chippy V. Don't try, try this level one of the tournament.
Nope. No, then I wanna go bigger. Everyone goes three X there too, and I wanna go like four point five.
It's my second bounty.
Five.
You get a booty.
Yeah, we got a booty.
I'm just checking.
I'm just checking as well.
I'm just.
Yeah, it's fine.
I I have more chip than him. I will, I have a.
If you wanna do this, then I think you just jam. You can't jam here. It just has to be a check.
Alright, you think we're, I'm pulling up a sim. You think we're five percent of the field left?
Less or more than that. He said about fifty people. This is a massive tournament, like one.
I would guess ten percent.
That's fine, so we're, we're definitely the money. I'll get small blind thirty-seven, us with sixty-nine. That's reasonable.
How many people are in this tournament?
Three uh three hundred.
Three thousand, so we're down to fifty people. So about two percent of the field.
You want to see it?
What says you got two percent?
Alright, uh this is, this is an ICM PKO solution, ten percent of the field left. We may be uh further in than that, but we'll start here. Uh small blind with thirty-seven, we have sixty-nine, they limp, uh no all-ins. Uh don't think we're that surprised by that. And fives are good enough to raise, um cuspy.
Notice the sizing too, or not.
Yeah, three point two five is is big enough. Four, more than four is just too much. Um let me take this a little bit later. Like five percent and notice this is very big field. This is also a thousand players. Uh twenty-seven, okay, we got thirty-seven versus sixty-nine again. Looks pretty similar.
And again, it's. And the sizing is uh is, yeah, but it's it's nice, uh it's nice to see because I'm doing it uh four on five every time, so.
Yeah, four and five is too big from the small blind. You almost never use those sizings. Like the the general is three point five and then as you get shorter, you'll go smaller than that even.
Yeah, maybe if you're like over a hundred bigs or if you're playing a cash game, it's different, right?
Yeah, I just looked them up for two hundred and and yeah, it's raising to four. I think that's fine, but yeah. It's gotta size down, size up a little bit when you're super deep and size down when you're the shell. Vamos. The Brazilians are in the chat, Louis.
Louis, Louis.
Fuck, the Brazilians are.
Alright, so we bomb it. And he clicks us. Yeah, get out. You get in. Uh yeah, you must hit the five, you luck box.
Did you stuff it?
What's wrong with you?
Oh, you jam, oh, okay. I thought, I thought you meant you call, I'm like.
Why do you not check and see a flop?
Yeah.
We just, dude, we just saw a sim, it's a fine raise.
But how do you, Tim, how does the sim respond to limp?
Yeah, I I don't think the sim will like it, but I was at the time.
I have one question for you. Do you think that people's limp back three bet range is excessively value heavy, excessively bluff heavy or properly balanced?
Bluff heavy?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I I bluff a lot and even I don't know if I have enough limp. Uh check raise or limp raises.
It's hard to find these. I expect we're not folding the pair that we ISO. We're not gonna raise fold fives, but.
Danny is correct.
What do you mean? Of course we can.
Bonk, 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 bonk.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, you see, you see.
Yep, so small blind back raises eight point five and then just.
What's, what's this small blind doing it with?
Uh you know, a bunch of shit that they're not doing in real, real life. Um no, actually, it's kind of value heavy. Ace nine, kings, ace, king, queens, jacks.
And and yeah, I'm I'm more bluff than that, I'm pretty sure.
Actually, like nothing here, what?
A little queen eight was a treat. I mean, he's under high ICM because he's like medium stack against big stack, so he just uh. Cause when we take it all in.
This is just the fucking nuts.
Yeah, he just folds all his slivers of trash.
How deep it be in the, in the actual game?
Uh this is five percent of field remaining. Uh small blind has twenty-seven, big blind has fifty. So it's pretty reasonable.
Oh yeah, he had more like thirty-seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's gonna be, but pretty significantly different. It's ten more big.
But also those sizings are smaller in this sim, so it's a little closer, but the ranges will shift.
Alright, I'm looking it up in the in the deeper sim. I have thirty-seven versus sixty-nine. I think it's gonna be pretty.
He's pretty insane.
By the way, I didn't.
It's the same, yeah, it's the same.
I didn't raise for value.
It's more like.
Nice.
It's more denial with the fives, right?
That's crazy.
Wait, so he folded to your, to your pocket fives?
Well, that is knowing your opponent right there.
You caught him on some bullshit.
It's both bullshit and knowing your opponent.
Well done, well done. Dude, that's a huge pickup, damn.
And it's small?
That's small. Yeah, twenty-five percent.
I don't know, I'm a bit big here. I'm telling you, that's small.
Like name, name hands that you're worried about. There's just like, he just has a lot of like hands that are nearly drawing dead against us. No heart.
Big bets here. Free chips.
The monsters come out for Louis when he gets deep. Only ace of hearts X.
He's like, I have top set of aces, I'm all in.
Look dude, it's 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 bet ten. And this is a chippy V sim. Under ICM, sizings generally go down.
He shouldn't be flying much out of position when free bear.
Three bet pot, zero big bets. In position.
He's probably supposed to like cool like only like five percent of the time.
I love the. Cooler and combo draws, really good.
Yeah, in ICM, the range isn't gonna be this, like loads of this shit's gonna drop out.
Well, this is us.
Yeah. Yeah.
Twenty-five is big.
Right? Yep.
On board, we'll start having bigger sizing.
And it's cool, cause like he has hands with equity against us, like king, queen without a heart, like what's that gonna do here, you know?
Queen of diamonds just folds, right?
Yeah, like king, queen, diamonds is just like shit, well.
No heart, no pair, no play.
Yeah.
What end are we looking at?
Uh jack, jack. With a heart.
Hey, so. I think it's been mainly because it's a three bet pot. As we only bet small, we never use any other side.
But that's pretty common in secret spots as well, we tend to see a lot of small sizes on monotone boards, that's like a typical. Louis, you taught me this crap, now, now you're forgetting it.
I know, I know, but there's something to it. No?
We, we will get better, Louis gets worse.
For me, this is just like super standard, like, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Doing it like, like Sensei taught me.
Right, so may I talk? Uh. I've learned from the master class from Justin Saliba, that when there's no high cards on the board, on low monotone boards, they can actually play differently, so my guess, okay, just quickly. It's nine, seven, four, raise, call, fold. Any board, huh? Nine, seven, four, just curious to see if we have any big bets. So we'll move on very quickly. There's no big bad thing here either.
Slivers, yeah.
What if you put? King. Jack.
I mean, you're, you're not looking at this board, though, this is the entirety of the range, if you want to see this board, you gotta go to the.
Yeah, yeah, but it's the same, right?
Oh, the other thing, like. On the left, right?
From a range construction too, like, he's opening suited sixes off suit nines. So our three bets are gonna remove nines from his range and remove sevens from his range. He's gonna be a little more pruned than us here.
Okay.
With top pair.
Bet small.
Too big.
I, I bet, I bet too big, yeah.
Okay.
Louis, I found some half pot bets in, um, cutoff versus big blind. So that might be the spot that you're thinking about?
It's really, has to do with texture of them on the onboard more.
Yeah, you know, on, on nine, seven, four, on this exact board, um, cutoff versus big blind, um, I found a bunch of like half pot bets, so not, not huge, but bigger.
In theory, in my mind.
A single raise pot.
Like, if, if the ace is out there in the wild, you can size up a little bit. Is what I'm trying to say.
And if we have a lot of sets and straights and two pairs also.
Not in three good pots, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Not at all.
Uh, probably just call here.
Yeah.
But you can, it's a PKO, right? Maybe you can trade that some?
No, we're too deep in the tournament.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's like that we can see the, the amount of bounty the people have.
Ooh, I think it's a little too much, you just lose the maximum when he has it.
Yeah, he has queen, I think.
I mean, you're only isolating yourself to better hands when you do this, like, what, what can call you, that you be?
Yeah, you're, you're hoping to get called by ace king, it's ambitious.
Yeah, thing is here, like, you're playing this sim to get this bounty, right? So you just check and you call, and then you give some bluffs in there, when you do this, there's no more bluffs.
That'll, yeah. For a main hand, just play it, call.
What you're doing here is, now you're at a discomfort, you're not comfortable, because you could be beat. But your, your job here is to call, 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 and sometimes, sometimes fold on bad rivers, um.
Yeah, 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 I, I.
When you shove here, you're trying to make it easy for yourself.
Yeah, save, save the half pot bet.
But what that does is he plays perfectly, that, that's a mistake for sure.
Yeah, yeah, and you, and you end up, I, 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 I bet sure this is.
And you end up saving money too, even against queens, because like queens might shut down after the ace hits, uh.
Yeah.
Like you check all the flop, uh, it's one thing, and then on the turn, you know, uh.
Yeah, I, I wasn't happy, uh, at all for this sim, this is why I remember exactly what he had.
Turn, yeah, he could go bets and you fold, or it goes check, check, and you play the river.
Exactly. Hmm, okay, just a second.
I'm folding this.
Hmm.
I may have, because we are, we are so, and, and the guy on the, uh, the, the guy raising is, was really strong, he had, um, eighty-nine, I think, score on the G, on the, triscorp.
I don't hate, hate calling.
Filter is on.
Like, we thought the king, and he starts applying aggression, it's just a nightmare.
It's a zero EV cool, essentially, right?
Yeah. Stone cold blood weather range.
It's since it's pre-flop, we can look this one up, so.
I mean, it's gonna be king A, I think, uh, chippy V.
Forty-five, big blind.
Be a bit lower.
Twenty-five, funding.
You mean this hand? Or this hand?
The king nine.
Would you say even chippy V is folding?
Five percent or final three tables? No, chippy V is, oh, against two players fold, oh my god, I did best, we're multi-way, fold, fold, fold.
Yeah, it's a fold, right?
I'm folding king ten O all day.
You're, you're never seen, you're never seen this, any of this chip again.
No.
You make the most money by folding then. Uh, win.
This sucks.
I'm holding.
Um. What are you guys doing here?
No, I think a win's good.
I like jam.
What do you do with nines?
Oh, nines is more difficult, because you probably, yeah.
Mix, mix. Jam and call.
Bet three, yeah.
Or, I mean, not mix, like, actually mix, but like, decide based on the opponent.
Why are we sizing up? You like this half pot C bet, huh?
You can size this up.
This looks like a big.
Makes sense, yeah, yeah, especially, I mean, I would just check this hand probably, but if you want to bet, I like big, like, you're not gonna barrel many cards here. If at all.
Why are you checking this? Why, why are you checking anything here? Is it an ICM thing that you're checking, Danny? Or do you always check this board with some combos?
I, this one, I, I pure bet whatever I have, and I may, I'm, I, I think I will, I will so, I will, uh, second barrel a lot, will turn barrel a lot.
It's a combo thing for me, Louis, I just, there's like certain a size that don't have any backdoors that I just don't feel.
Yeah, just bet flop and give up.
I mean, you can also just try to check down, it's fine.
I'm like, two questions, why do you bet this sizing, and why do you, why are you barreling a lot?
Uh, on a king jack board, I think I am, I, I, I'm betting, uh, more than, uh, I'll spot most of the time. But because of ICM, I decide to bet a little bit less than, uh. Usually, I will, uh, bet three quarter, three quarter of, of pot on this. But because ICM, I decide to bet, uh, I'll put.
Yeah, it's just a small bet, though.
Okay, it's small.
Oh, the ace has bet small, okay.
You've used this half pot sizing a lot, though, I've noticed, um, and it's not very often a thing, it's normally gonna be, you know, C bet small, just a general strategy, and then there are certain board textures where you size up.
Yeah.
I have a question on this board texture, I thought, I thought the king jack board was a big bet board, um, you know. And I wanted to know if we, if we didn't have the flush draw there, would be, would we be betting larger or smaller when we bet? I was interested in those two things.
I usually bet smaller when I have the flush draw.
This region of range doesn't like betting, betting big, but I think our king queens and stuff will still find some big sizes here.
Mm-hmm. So he checks.
Um, go to our node, yeah. Yeah, there's still some rainbow nature here with all the sizings.
So when we bet here, we bet small most often.
Yes.
And then if this thing goes, if it, so this is not a big bet board, I mean, it has big bets, but it's mostly a small bet board.
It's a choose your own adventure.
Okay.
Now, the, the important thing to notice, though, is that the big bets frequency matches your check frequency. Right? Because, like, a lot of boards, you would want to range bets with the big nut advantage like this. But when you have bigger sizes that you're going to go for with bigger value and bigger bluffs, you're also gonna have to protect that range with checks. And so hands like tens and jacks are often best here if a lot of money doesn't go in the pots.
Right.
So those are the ones that want to protect your range here.
Now, uh, change one of the diamonds to a heart, I just want to see.
Like, jack seven, jack eight, jack nine, ten, jack, like, all of those.
Oh, oh, got you.
Okay. Now, our.
They bet now about smaller sizing.
All the thirty.
Bet more often. And we bet smaller all the time.
Mm-hmm.
So the, the, the flush draw pushed, the flush draw pushed it up, which is the opposite of Matt Affleck's thing from, that I'm confused by, okay.
Well, yeah, because, uh, like, well, it depends on the board texture, if it's like, uh, ten high or nine high rainbow, you're gonna, you can bet huge.
Right. Uh. Good to hit an ace.
Okay, I think that was fine.
Okay, uh, after this, then we are twenty, twenty people left.
Okay.
Boom.
Oh, nicely scammed.
I win tournaments.
Wait for a better hand, fish.
I hope he went to bed, oh, uh, I three bet this.
I like this, I, uh.
Yeah, yeah, there is, yeah, there is, and I bet sixes like that, I wanted to show that I'm really strong, but when he came on top of me, I'm done with it.
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is perfect.
Yeah. I, I was thinking of going all in, but I, I was thinking if I bet just six, he will think I'm so I'm stronger, so, anyway. You got, I'm pretty sure I folded the.
Yeah.
I for, I folded it right.
Yeah, because there's a guy with forty behind you, you don't want to go all in.
Yeah, the one I'm getting here is absolutely.
Crazy, yeah.
Yeah, because he could have aces, and then you're out.
Yeah.
You know, so even I don't like the three bet, honestly.
And, and the guy, and the guy, uh.
The thing is, here, when you three bet, what do you think his response is gonna be? Call your three bet? Not so much, he's just gonna push or fold.
Yeah, exactly.
This is actually what.
You know, against the push, you're not great, against the fold, you're not, you know.
But, uh, uh, he will, he, he's folding more than he should, I'm pretty sure, uh, the guy was folding more.
Yeah, but it's a PKO, man.
Yeah, Louis, but, Louis, but, uh, the bounties matter less now, it's ICM more than anything, right?
Yeah.
So we don't really want to call that much.
You wanna pick suited hands, suited aces and suited kings?
To what?
Because it's ICM.
I prob, I'd rather call the suited branch than three bet the offsuit branch.
Much rather call with this here, you make a top pair, and then you play for twenty bigs, you know?
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess there is like barely any cool in range.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's so he, like, heavy ICM now to where the bounties don't really matter as much. So I, I mean, we could look at a vanilla tournament and just see.
I don't think that would be correct.
Why?
It's a pretty big assumption of yours.
What is?
Ruling out the, the, the PK or the, the bounty.
It matters, but just less, so.
That's true, but it, it's not zero, you know?
Yeah.
I don't think it is, but like, we could look at, uh, at them.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, Nick scored four, just three bet fold, it's fine.
Wow, I mean.
You know, we're gonna win four chips sometimes.
I just don't like the three bet, uh, I think you should either call or just fold.
But what I'm saying is, we're in a disagreement, so the only way to like, know, it would be to look at a sim, but.
I, I, I mean, if I wasn't running this sim now, I, I'd show my sims.
Where's Tim when we need him?
Yeah, he just left.
My current sim's got thirteen hours on it.
He said like twenty people left, so final three?
Yeah, we are the final table, uh, final two table.
Two or three?
Two.
Okay.
Is there just one arrangement for that? Okay, so it's.
You're at a thousand man field, that's why they, I guess they just started adding those in. Yeah.
That's good that they added that.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to more of them populating the.
It's, I think a thousand and two hundred's very different.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, but, but anyway, the, the guy that I, I three bet, I, I am pretty confident I can three bet in him, uh, a lot. And he will just fall, he's just.
So there's one where the cutoff has twenty-four. Go back to the page you're on. Cutoff has twenty-four and, um, small blind had thirty-eight or something, yeah, that, that one.
Yeah, but, 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 one of the issues was that the big bind had us covered, you know, or was close to covering us, that's what we were scared about. That's why Louis, we go six.
Well, the, we can still see if it's free betting.
Yeah.
It, it'll probably be pushing towards.
If it's not free betting in this configuration, it's not gonna three bet in the other configuration, that's for sure.
Everyone's right.
Is it mixing all three? Oh, look at that.
Well, out of three betting.
Anyway, at the, when I did that, I did the four exploitable, because, uh, exploitative play, because the guy was I think if, I think if all is, is Jack here, so.
Do that one, but make him the hijack Louis, because that hijack has twenty-one. There you go. This is gonna be a little better.
Yeah, I think we do either.
No jamming.
Fifty, fifty.
Fifty, fifty.
It's such a good bluff, man, like, it is, is playability is not great post flip out position, you've got kings, ace, king, queens.
You can see here with the ICM, you're not really calling that off, and you're raising, uh, more than two, two X as much as you're calling.
Yeah. This is the one hand that does like it, because when you flop a king or a queen, lose to ace king, you lose to ace queen, but you cooler all the other kings and queens up there.
You won't like it.
Uh, jam?
Yeah.
I think jam's good. It sucks, but I, I do this as well.
Don't, don't you want to lip jam the offsuit?
I don't know, I just call here.
Yeah, I think, let's look this up, I think, I think you cool the suited ones. Maybe you jam like ace five.
I think you're limping jamming the suited wheels.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then like you're good offsuit aces.
Yeah, but, yeah, and then you're gonna flat like ace seven, ace eight, ace nine suited, right? Like, the, the, a bit better ones.
You need HRC, Louis.
I mean, we can find a similar spot, it won't be perfect.
Yeah, we need twenty-six against forty.
Twenty-seven.
Oh, there's.
Uh, the top one, the twenty-six.
I'll do it.
Four up from your line, there you go.
Yeah.
That's exactly our sim.
Yeah, that's good. The embrace.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought, I thought we're jabbing the offsuit.
Why the sizing?
I just bet, to be honest, I didn't think I really.
You need to take that, uh, half pot sizing off your bar.
You think?
Nice. Oh, not nice.
Not, not nice.
I, uh, um, wow.
Jam?
I don't know.
You have no fold equity, do you?
You, you do.
You, I mean.
God, this is dicey.
Yeah, yeah, I have about, uh, the guy, the first one that raises, uh, total fish, he can call me with ship. Yeah, yeah, I have about, uh, the guy, the first one that raises, uh, total fish, he can call me with shit. And the other guy will fold pretty much any two. So that's why I push here.
I mean, I wouldn't hate just completing, to be honest.
I don't hate jamming, but yeah, I don't know the best players. Wow.
When he shows up with, when he shows up with that, all of a sudden, this is a golden jam.
But did you see the, did you see the, the flop?
Yeah, always a sweat.
Uh, that was terrible if I bust here.
Why the sizing?
He loves the, he loves the big bet.
You, you don't like the, the alpha.
Thing is, you have to stop to size up just because of the flush draw. It's, it's a good idea, okay? I've seen you over and over. You always size up when there's a flush draw and in general, it's good. But it's not just a flush draw, it's too high card in the flush draw. Or deep stacked poker, you're pretty short here. Uh, that you don't really have this kind of big bets, you know?
It also depends on the hand class, like this hand never really wants to bet big. It's. Like, just as, if you're betting ace, jack, oh, it's a small bet.
So big bet is good, but deep stack and with two high card flush draws.
Or with like stronger or weaker hands, like your marginal decent stuff doesn't normally wanna just go polar.
Like bet big, like king, ten of diamonds.
That was a large pot.
Okay, you, you won't like this one. No, because the guy with the nine big blind of a one hundred. But, uh, five hundred bounty and the guy, the, that is zero big blind of, uh. Six hundred bounty, I will have fold the guy with two, with, um. Thirteen.
There's a, one of them has five hundred, one of them has six hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's another guy who's all in for zero chips too.
Bounties are too high, right?
Yeah, the bounty was too high and what, and the, and the worst can happen is I just have a twenty, twenty big blind.
Well, the worst can happen is you bust.
No, I can, I can bust.
Yeah, if the big stack called you.
Right?
And we are at a final table.
Oh, okay, so you lose that hand?
Yeah, and by I'm finable.
Was that a bad, bad, bad gamble then?
We'd have to look at the bounty sizes and run it in HRC.
Well, he, he passed, he lost, he lost fifteen hundred dollars of bounties and won four thousand dollars for second place.
Am I wrong here? The big blind is all in here, right?
Yeah, he's all in, he's all in.
Those three bounties.
Yeah, possible. There are two significant and one that is not significant.
Like if this big stack just has like pocket tens here.
Is there anywhere written folding here?
Yes, for sure, but I, I don't know if it's better than calling. Like what happens if you jam and the big stack calls you and he has like king, queen or pocket tens and you bust it?
And then you're out, it's just a, you, uh, this.
Yeah. If that's what's happened, I will not have shown my score.
Exactly.
I mean, I mean, you can get, I, I guess you can get the, the cutoff to fold a lot better hands.
Maybe chip converse conservation here is better.
I don't think he's folding better hands.
This cutoff just showed up with five, seven suited, right?
Yeah, he's hunting, bro.
You, you're gonna be good against him a lot with ace high.
But i- is this a situation where you wanna be against king, ten suited?
No, but you have to take it because there's three bounties and two of them are significant.
I'm not so sure.
If there's a six hundred dollar bounty and then, and uh, what was the other one? The nine hundred dollar bounty? Like there's fifteen hundred dollars worth of bounties on the table. He finished second for four K, like. Uh, fifteen hundred dollars worth of bounties is maybe too much to pass up.
Yeah, but like, what's your equity gonna be when it, when?
You just, you, you just need garden, to be honest. If you have three deuce, I think you have to go with it.
Wow.
No, I mean, I don't think so. I really don't think so.
No.
I think it's close, like I think this is worth, uh, running in HRC because there's two arguments, right? One is there's a lot of bounties to play for. Two, we're in extremely high ICM spot, big stack versus big stack. Like, it's such a disaster. We're probably in, what, the top three places right now in the tournament?
We are three, yeah.
So like.
And we go to the fif- fifth, uh, fifth place, I think.
Busting in third cuz we're bounty hunting is just a nightmare or busting, you know, in.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't say I'm happy with this, but, but, with the, with the bounty on the table. I, I was thinking at the time that I can't just fold, I, I can't fold.
I understand.
I may, maybe, may, may, I may be totally wrong, but this is what I was thinking at the time.
I'm not, I'm not saying you're wrong either. I, I, I don't know what the right play is. I, I'm, I'm, I'm very interested in this box. I think it's close. I don't think it's clear cut either way, um. I'm not saying it's definitely a fold by any stretch, but. I, I just ICM is so strong here. I don't know which is more important, the ICM pressure or the ability to win the bounties here.
Nits, it's in the chat, Scotty says fold.
I mean, if you're gonna have twenty percent, but it's like a thousand in bounties, you know, it's only two hundred.
I will go with team falls, so in both cases, I will be right.
Yeah, I think folding would be good there because. If you fold, you make it to the final table with piles of chips. Uh, but, here we are.
I'm, I'm probably playing in game, but I don't know if it's right or wrong.
So I save the hand, I'm gonna get it, right?
Thank you.
Okay, now the guy that was at my, at my left is now on my right. And the guy that is at my right again with the twenty-nine point ninety-one stack. Out of a one thousand dollar bounty. Ooh, this is the only one significant, uh, I think.
Why the sizing?
Uh, same as before.
Cautious, man, cuz you know.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't like it. I don't even like being in the hand, so I just wanted to shut the action.
I mean, what happens when you get called?
Yeah, not great.
No, no, I don't like this one.
Need to be more cautious, especially on.
The same thing I was talking with Louis about earlier is these final table situations with high ICM.
Yes.
You don't really wanna polarize. It's just like, you're gonna make a lot of small jabs, like that's small, that's small, that's small, try to make small pots.
You got no kicker. Same here.
Why the sizing?
I get.
It seems like you see a flop, you see that half pot every time.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not what I do, uh, usually, but, but it seemed like, uh, on this story, it seemed like it, but as really, I, it's not.
And now he hits, he sizes down. Jeez.
I didn't. It's size, it's size.
Flush completed, the flush completed, that's a size down, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it's reasonable. I'd bet like four, four-ish here.
Okay. I don't like this tree bet.
I like it.
I like it. I think it's too big, but.
Yeah, fine.
I like the idea. There's another sixteen big blind stack, there's a twenty-two big blind stack. We can just apply ICM pressure on this guy and now I'm folding.
No.
Yeah. Louis, did you wanna, you wanna fold the king, queen? Did you wanna call it? What did you wanna do?
Easy fold for me.
I think folding's okay too. I, I just like applying, this guy is such a high ICM pressure on him.
Must have been a really big bounty. How much was it?
No, it's, it was, uh, it was like two hundred, but at the final tables, that's really significant.
Why do you call the jam?
Yeah, I, I didn't like it, but. The, this guy was pissing me off all the tournament long, so this is not a good idea, uh, a good, uh, a good reason, but. I had a feeling it could be weak here, but it was not.
Yeah, they're usually not at the final table when they do this.
Yeah.
I mean, you're gonna be flipping sometimes.
It was not a good, but it was your reason.
He's gonna be four betting dimes and turns.
Pocket, no, okay, yeah.
I think it's a bunch here.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, you were three bet bluffing and then you called the format.
You like a smaller three bet size then?
Yeah, I like a smaller three bet, like five point three, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You should, you shouldn't shove now, I don't.
Yeah, I think you're on pills now, Eric.
I was not until, but, uh, I was thinking the, the guy had. The U T G was opening way too much. And he was, he had the fish tag, but the problem is the skull with, with a queen flip. So I was thinking he will have fold the hand that show me, so yes, that was a punt.
You're very courageous doing that and all, gentle.
Yeah, this is three punts in a row.
Yeah, three punts.
Yeah, three punts in a row, I think you're on pills, maybe.
Forty Niners are looking for a kicker if, you know, you have some free time.
Oh, fade the world.
Oh my goodness, he called. He called, he got the ace nine of diamonds to get this and you don't die. You don't die. And you don't die. Wow.
Gotta win your flips.
Oh, you don't shovel wind here.
Oh, now you're back.
I know what he's gonna bet. Ready, ready?
Free, free.
Check.
I like it, I like the check.
Hold you.
Now you're easy, I'm aware.
Yeah.
I can win, chicken win.
Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I shall have just sat on a dirty story.
How about that guy not betting the turn?
Yeah, I think he should bet turn.
Top card pairs, two overs, gut shot.
You see, half of the people tell me that nowadays. They tell me, oh, I don't have the hand history. Okay, what do we do here? We have a pair. Big stack against big stack, risk premium, it's high.
Call one straight.
Yeah.
No, we need a diamond.
Yeah.
We have to lose more money with a diamond. We don't have to lose more money without one.
Cold. I don't hate this.
It's okay, but I think it's a bit loose.
Um, it's okay.
Louis, you don't get to tell people the ranges.
We're in second now, small blind calls, this is interesting.
Tournament yesterday had nineteen V pit.
After three hands.
No, no, it's like two fifty.
Yeah.
Then I punted.
I like this, um.
Well, it's a, it's a bit big board, isn't it? But.
I'm checking for sure.
Yeah, you might check range here.
Board has lots of locked up.
Three bet pot, right? Interesting.
Versus big steel stack that covers us?
Yeah, it is, it is a, a big bet board, isn't it?
I'm probably check jamming, but God, I don't, I don't know. What am I doing?
I don't think it's gonna be a, a lot of big bets here, like big stack against big card.
If I have pocket, yeah, if I have pocket kings here, I'm gonna win.
You're just all in on the flop? No, I think it's like fourteen chips is the play.
Oh, maybe not. I mean, chippy V, I don't know, I don't know, I see him, but.
I hate this spot so much.
I think you just bomb it and pray, man.
No, I think if you have kings, use two X pot, not gonna lie.
All right, we're gonna look it up. But what is this? This is FT?
Yeah, final table, ICM post flop.
I mean, FT, I'm flatting this pre.
Uh, I like the free bet.
It went back, it, no.
Was it a squeeze?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not flatting, uh, as, as a small blind on the final table.
Low, low, uh, low jack, hijack and small blind.
I mean, when you're second place versus chip leader, you shouldn't be like going too crazy, you know? But three bet bluffing is fine, I guess. And then, all right, we're here. Uh.
All right.
He runs for the bomb.
Mad ass, I can ask him, what do I do?
You're punting here?
No, this is the guy with one thousand, one thousand dollar. Not this time.
Okay.
Next time, next time.
Yep.
I like it.
Uh huh.
Given memories to induce.
Not with that, uh, yeah, yes. Uh, why do we not see that flop?
Care. That's, that's not good. That's not a good answer.
Ace, ace high board, uh, EP versus small blind, so we're gonna drill this board and there's a three big blind stacking a big blind, so. This guy is gonna give you a very straightforward answer very quickly.
Yeah.
Just bet small and then play from there. It's a C bet, range C bet board.
Oh my god.
This is a punt, punt and a half, bro.
Oh, no.
Oh, yes. You just lost three hundred dollars.
What was that?
He's building the image, so when he has it.
Nice.
He has ace king.
Oh, no.
Too big.
Too big, go back, go back, go back, go back.
Too big, too big.
Three bet spot.
Yeah.
No jam.
Yeah, you're gonna wanna have bluffs here too. It's very natural, but, yeah. Just make it a seven or something.
Yep.
Three, nine.
Old fold, fold.
Ladies.
Nice, wow. Cooler, four handed.
Okay, okay, you, you.
Comforted.
You can, you can, uh, we can stop the any story right now. Yeah, thank you for coming, guys.
What's up, Eric?
It's been a pleasure.
Of the rest?
Oh, he jams it, huh? He jams.
Oh, no, okay, whatever.
What? Oh, that's too weak.
You could check there, I think.
Think, even, I think jamming.
Yeah, you can jam, right, Nick? Three by jam the flop.
Yeah.
Slow down, Louis.
No, 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 don't slow down.
Wait, what, what was the flop action? Jesus.
Bad.
Slow down, Louis.
There's nothing to see.
What do you mean, there's nothing to see?
What do you wanna see?
I mean, either, either end it or look at the hands for real. Don't do this.
Okay, what do you wanna see here? Oh, wow, amazing. Yeah, you can see that the flop, it's fine. I mean, you can trap it, it's fine.
Go slow enough, at least that we can see the sizings before you go to the next hand.
You wanna appreciate every big blind.
I wanna see the sizing.
I wanna see who's betting and how much. Check, 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 check. I, why bet?
I wanna savor the pain.
Why are we betting? Oh, why are we betting with ace high?
Yeah. Yeah, it's not a good bet.
I like the call.
But, okay, you know. Okay, so jam.
Good.
Jam. Boom. Jam. Boom.
Good.
Jam. Ball.
Bad.
Aces, no.
I was, I was just waiting for the nut pedal in, not gonna lie.
Uh, how many big lines was that?
Thirteen.
Oh, he opened, opened, okay. Yeah, it's fine.
You could flat those.
Why are we jamming this hand?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what, what to do at this time, I was just. Because it was earlier in the. In the sit and go, I was thinking, I, I have to show that I can just shove seventeen in line.
Yeah, sure, but.
What about this one? Dollar fold?
The suited like Broadway stuff, you can raise, call off, they're good enough, right?
Yeah.
So you wanna have, you wanna have a jam range and like a raise, call, raise, fold range?
And this is the him.
This is a call, it's easy call, yeah.
Okay. All right, that was a nice hand history, Eric. You did your best, well done.
I quit poker.
There, there, no, 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 no. Well, there's a few things you can work on, your sizings on the flop, based on texture, we can work on that together. There's a lot you can do to, to improve. So, all right, thanks a lot for coming, everybody.
GG.